I make my charge to this Synod. It's what a privilege it is to serve you as a bishop of this wonderful diocese, and to represent you in the wider councils of the Church in Canada and across this communion. We have been truly blessed in the breadth of the gifts God has given us, in the resources of people who have come from every part of the globe, in the physical resources we have inherited, and in the rich diversity of our spiritual life, all rooted in the Gospel of Jesus Christ. One hundred and fifty years ago this month, John Strawn died. John Strawn was the first bishop of Toronto. I am the eleventh bishop of Toronto. I remember the moment of coming to the front of the cathedral at the time of my election, simply overwhelmed by the thought of following the footsteps of John Strawn, when I was elected some fourteen years ago. He had the energy of an ever-ready bunny on steroids. Strawn, a larger-than-life character, brilliant, forceful, energetic, flawed, set the stage for the diocese of Toronto as we know it. Not least in this. He trained up an indigenous clergy. He insisted on locally financially self-sufficient church. He enfranchised the laity in its governance, and respected a diversity of theological expression, within Anglican limits, of course. He indeed set the DNA of this diocese as a church that is fully engaged in the life of the community around it. While he unfortunately despised Baptists and Methodists, the Anglican faith he practiced did not stop at the church doors, and it was not limited to a Sunday morning. Strawn instinctively exercised adaptive leadership to shape the church in a new place on firm, age-old Christian principles. But he had to face challenges that no one had ready-prepared answers for. He took risks. He tried new things. He had to adapt old ways to meet new situations. This Synod is actually a result of that. He convened a gathering of clergy and laity before it was legal or constitutional to do so. Yes, there were discussions in Parliament in England to begin the changes that would allow that, but there was a pastoral reality that could not wait. He was facing a situation where he needed the clergy and the laity of the diocese to pay for their own ministry, and he believed that they would not and could not do that unless they took a share in its governance. It's what Archbishop Rowan Williams more recently called, in another context, "a principled loosening of the structures" to allow the mission of the church in a local context to flourish. The Synod came first, the authorization came later, and so we have our 175th gathering of our diocese and Synod today. John Strawn also convened the first Synod for the newly-created diocese of Huron that had been carved out of Toronto to elect its first bishop, when bishops were still crown appointments. Queen Victoria graciously consented to appoint the elected candidate, therefore smoothing over a possible issue, but it ushered in a new age in Canada. Bishop Strawn was the last and the only bishop of Toronto to be appointed, not elected. Bishop Strawn was "missional" before that word was ever coined. He encouraged the foundation of churches throughout the growing region of what became the diocese. He also provided alternatives to the prevailing norms. He founded a traditional parish, St. John's York Mills, in 1816, but then he started a seven o'clock Sunday evening service, a fresh expression, if you will, at the grammar school for those who could not go to the morning services at St. James, now the cathedral, because of their work, or because they were socially uncomfortable, or perhaps even socially unwelcome. He was an ardent proponent of education and formation, establishing grammar schools, public schools, three universities, theological training, and even a faculty of medicine. In founding the York District Grammar School in October of 1812, he'd been in the colony in York for about two months. He provided a range of academic courses to build the capacity of young men, and they were all men at that point, to take their roles in state and church, offering reduced fees for the poor so that they too could rise into leadership. And in spite of his reputation as a partisan, John Strawn actually worked to set a standard for inclusiveness in his day. Dr. Jonathan Loft, one of our members of Synod, spoke of Strawn at a recent gathering at the cathedral in these words: "In words both sacramental and racializing, Bishop John Strawn expressed the core of his pedagogy thus: 'Indeed, the human mind, whether clothed in a white, red, or black tabernacle, exhibits the same qualities and powers when subjected to similar discipline; and the scripture account that we are all the descendants of one common parent is corroborated in the natural history of our species.'" These words originally published in 1819 conveyed sentiments profoundly unpopular, even disturbing to many of Bishop Strawn's contemporary readers, more than a decade before the abolition of slavery in the British Empire, more than forty years before Darwin dared to go into print. In them we find a kind of charter, moderately jarring to our years too, but sincere: "The mission statement of one who would court controversy his entire career in the cause of the church he loved and served." Thank you, Jonathan, for that. Among Strawn's notable assistants was Neil Alexander Bethune, a high churchman, one of his first divinity students who later headed up the Theological Training Institute in Coburg, and eventually succeeded Strawn as Archdeacon of York and then as the second bishop of Toronto. But as important was Henry James Grasset, whom he appointed as his curate in 1835. What is remarkable for a man of, shall we say, strenuous opinion, is that Strawn and Grasset were at the opposite ends of the theological spectrum: Strawn, high church; Grasset, evangelical. Yet Strawn appointed him as his domestic and examining chaplain when he became bishop, and thus with the responsibility for the selection of candidates for ordination, and appointed him to succeed him as rector of the cathedral. One of Bishop Strawn's enduring legacies is how he dealt with property to underwrite the ministry and mission of the church. He convinced rectors to amalgamate their allocation of the clergy reserves, that land that the government gave for support to the church. And although Strawn was able to get fewer allocations from the government than he hoped, he wanted them all. His leverage of the lands the church had been given still provides income today for ministry from the York rectors in Otobico and Peterburg Leibes. Last year, we adopted a new strategic plan that will set the direction for our work for the next few years. I want you to hear the links back to our own DNA: leadership and formation; governance; stewardship of property and resources for ministry; innovation; trust and culture. "Growing in Christ," as it is titled, identifies these five focus areas for our attention as a diocese, which are rooted in our vision: "An Anglican community committed to proclaiming and embodying Jesus Christ through compassionate service, intelligent faith, and godly worship." If you forget them, they're right there. Our mission is the work that we as Anglicans in this diocese are being called to do. We build healthy, missional Anglican communities that engage faithfully with the world and share the Gospel of Jesus Christ. Note the mission and the vision. These do not change much over time, but the specifics of how we need to put them into practice in our particular context does change. They are a continuation of the ministry that we have undertaken in this diocese since John Strawn's day. They can easily be applied to parish life as well and inform both the what we do and the how we are engaged to join in God's work of transforming lives. We'll take some time tonight to think through how it might apply in your parish, and indeed it does apply to your parish. Let me just take a few moments to look at some of these. Leadership and formation. We have a pressing need, we have had a pressing need, we continue to have a pressing need, for a renewed catechetical process: the formation of disciples who are being formed and who are formed in their faith and able to share that story of our faith winsomely. I will say yes, but more than that, we need to develop our capacity in apologetics. Not apologetics in the sense of to apologize or to say sorry, but in the older sense of that word: to give a cogent reason for the hope that lies within us, to be able to tell patiently, kindly, compassionately, and effectively what is our faith. Part of that catechetical process is growing in our own understanding of our faith. This Lent... This Lent, I am recommending that we all take part in a very simple exercise. This book, Meeting Jesus for the First Meeting Jesus in the Gospel of John, is a resource that's available at the resource table out there. Two dollars. Two dollars. This does not cost you a fortune. There's a video daily downloadable to your email. There are small group resources available for study in parishes if you wish to do that, or you can do it on your own. I would like you to join me in doing this. It's a joint project of Virginia Theological Seminary and the Society of St. John the Evangelist. This Lent, Meeting Jesus in the Gospel of John. But there's no dearth of good and diverse resources available. You don't have to create something from scratch. You can't use that as an excuse. I want every parish to find some program, some program, a program, and use it, and not only during Lent. Here's some examples: A diocesan-funded course produced by Wycliffe's Institute of Evangelism, written by Judy and Pat Paulson and Susan Bell; Christian Foundations: Grounding for a Life and Faith; or The Renewed Alpha Course; or Living the Questions; or the Pilgrim Series. There's all sorts of things available. And there's funding available through the Our Faith, Our Hope grants for more intensive leadership development, if you need that. Part of our leadership and development work is that we are in the midst of rethinking our recruitment strategy so that our leadership reflects more broadly the society that we serve. We have a new opportunity to rethink how the Congregational Development Department integrates the work of mission, congregational health, and formation, and how that fits into stewardship, communication, and our use of property. I am very grateful to the thirty-plus years of ministry that Canon Dave Robinson has given to our diocese and to the wider Church, and I thank the dedicated staff and highly experienced volunteers who have provided an inspired model of leadership in formation for other dioceses across our country and, in fact, in North America. Governance. For a number of synods, we have considered how we govern ourselves. Last week I was at the Synod of the Diocese of Niagara. I asked how many people were there for the first time. A few put up their hands. I said, "How many people were there twice?" Thumber people, "Three times, four times," and so on. "How many people for whom this is their first Synod?" Great. Second Synod. Third. Fourth. Tenth. I counted up, I think I have been at between seventy-five and eighty synods. That might be a definition of a Synod junkie. How do we govern ourselves? We have not figured out how to use technology effectively to bring people together to share ideas and make decisions. The technology is growing easier and more accessible. We need to figure it out. We have an enormous Synod, two to three times the size of any of our neighboring dioceses, twenty times the size of our provincial Synod, more than twice as large as our national Synod, and more than twice the size of the House of Commons. Now, there are many good reasons for this, perhaps. This is especially good bringing people together for celebration and consultation and learning, but it is a particularly cumbersome, expensive, and inefficient way to make some kinds of decisions. And even our forty-two-member Diocesan Council is forty percent larger than the Executive Council, also known as the Cabinet of the province of Ontario. And parish structures do not generally meet the needs of our parishes or our people either. The rethink is not a rearrangement of deck chairs on the Titanic, as the saying goes, but putting our structures at the service of our core mission: to be flexible and urgent in our response to the mission of Christ in our communities. And it will require innovation. Innovation based on evidence. Some years ago at Synod, I asked people to take some missional risks: to take the family car out for a spin, and I was promptly asked if people had permission to take the keys for the car. Yes, yes, and yes, they do. You do. We need to take risks, calculated risks to be sure, but complacency is not sustainable. And it's exciting to see what has happened when people do take the keys and do take the risks. I hope you have looked at the convening circular to see what has been going on in the diocesan family over this last year or two. It is impressive: reach-and-stretch grants, church plants and reboots, leadership support, new forms of ministry started, traditional forms of ministry reinvigorated, substantial contributions to the work of the church beyond our borders, more than $1.2 million for healing and reconciliation amongst our indigenous communities, and a half a million dollars for matching grants for refugee resettlement, just among a few of the things that we've been doing. We'll highlight four or five today and tomorrow, but they're just the tip of an iceberg, of ideas that are changing the way we understand and practice ministry today. And, and, we are also continuing excellent and exciting work, as we have always done it. Both and. Remember, that's my motto: both and, not either/or. Not everything has worked as planned. We are collecting the learnings, examining the data, figuring out what went well and repeating it, and figuring out what did not, and making adjustments, and trying again. And that's what innovation based on evidence is about: creating and maintaining a continuous learning organization. Evidence based on innovation is about making decisions based on good data, marrying the hunches we have with facts so that our interpretations and our decisions and our actions are based on reality, not just wishful thinking. It's about making good judgment, and so it's related to governance. It's about taking risks, so it requires trust. It's about prioritizing our resources, so it's related to stewardship. And that's what John Strawn did. Stewardship is importantly related to leadership and formation. We need to be formed as stewards of God's creation, avow of our baptism. Stewardship takes leadership. Stewardship is not only about money, but about people. We need to identify and call our potential leaders from all the cultures and traditions we have been blessed with in our diocese. We simply cannot afford to overlook or undervalue the gifts of people who look, or think, or decide differently than we do. We certainly cannot allow ourselves to do that with other Anglicans. I am committed to intentionally seek this diversity for the health and the faithfulness of our diocese. We have given attention to our patterns of financial giving, the stewardship, education, and mentoring programs that we have been developing have been very successful and need to be extended. We are in developing a program of legacy giving that you will hear more about over the coming year. But a major opportunity for us right now is the gift, and indeed the burden, of our properties. We have between one and one and a half billion dollars' worth of property. Billion, that's with a lot of zeros. And the zeros are at the end, not at the beginning. As a basic principle, as a basic principle, we cannot be possessed by our properties. On the contrary, our property is bound by the mission. So we are exploring new ways to manage these resources wisely and consistently, and seeking new ways to leverage these for the long-term benefit of the mission of our church, just as John Strawn did with the clergy reserves some 175 years ago. Now, I must say that we are seriously understaffed in our office to do this work in-house. And we will have to think outside the box. We'll have to think in different ways, and we will have to change our governance. But to do that requires a changed culture of trust. I've left that to the end because in the long run it's maybe perhaps the most important. We live in a polarizing world: distrust of the other, however the other is defined. A society that has tolerated bullies and abuse, that has normalized highly-charged discourse which publicly divides and mocks and diminishes opponents. That's often cloaked in a false tolerance in the name of free speech or expression of personal opinion. It's a worldview that has infiltrated the way we in the church speak and act. It is wrong. It's not healthy debate. It is contrary to the Gospel of Jesus Christ. It is contrary to the vows we make in baptism to respect the dignity of all others. It destroys communion. In the alternative, we are called in the scriptures to build all up with love. In the time when the boundaries of civil discourse are neither clear nor agreed, I think we should establish some mutually developed guidelines and accountability that will express our values: our values for Christian conversation and model parameters for our interactions with one another in the church, with the wider community, in person, in our meetings, and in our use of social media. Let us build a stronger culture of trust: trust to allow others to speak their truth; trust to allow others... Which is a culture of trust which is an essential component of Christian discipleship. It will impact our leadership, our governance, our capacity for innovation. It is a matter of good stewardship of our human resources. A challenge that continues to affect our life together, and yes, our mutual trust, is marriage. General Synod met a year ago, last June, in this very room, and approved the first step to amend the marriage canon to formally permit same-sex marriages in the church. Over the next year, including this afternoon, there will be further consultations as we prepare for a second and final reading of that canon at General Synod in 2019. With the advice of the Chancellor of General Synod, supported by a number of eminent canon theologians, I have acted under the provisions of the Constitution of General Synod and the authority of what is known as "use liturgicum," the liturgical and pastoral jurisdiction of a diocesan bishop within his diocese, to provide alternative rights for marriages that meet the pastoral needs of some in this diocese. As an interim pastoral measure in a restricted number of parishes where it has been requested after consultation, I have authorized some of those marriages to be solemnized in certain limited circumstances using a specific liturgy. Neither parishes nor individual clergy will ever be required to celebrate marriages contrary to their convictions. As I have said, not all welcome this development, some because it goes too far and some because it does not go far enough. The traditional position on marriage is an authentic, sustainable conviction that is historic and significant. It remains a coherent theological, biblical, and pastoral position within our Anglican tradition, but not the only one. All of us need to extend to each other the most generous Christian charity that our Redeemer calls us to exercise as we together seek to discern and live out God's will for us in our context today. We live in a very diverse church. The diversity that our diocesan community demonstrates means that we are called to witness to the faith in a variety of ways. And though such witnesses rooted in different interpretations and understanding of Holy Scripture and the tradition, the ways are recognizably Anglican. There are strong affirmations in our pastoral guidelines assuring a continued and honored place in all aspects of our diocese and life for those who do not agree. We are enriched by the breadth of this diversity and would be lessened by the loss of any voice. I am committed to continue the long practice of this diocese to reflect this authentic diversity in the selection and appointment of clergy, in honoring parish traditions, and in the membership and committee of committees and councils of this diocese. I issued a pastoral statement a few weeks ago, fully endorsed by all of the suffragan bishops, about how we intend to include in the life of the diocese clergy and laity hold differing convictions about sexuality issues that we are struggling with today. It is not boastful to say that other parts of the Anglican communion look to us as a model for dealing with patient generosity and gracious hospitality. It's not boastful because it's a fact. They do. This is not easy, and it is not to sweep under the carpet real and important differences. It is rather to recognize that such differences still do not permit us to abandon our most basic need, our neediness, to hold one another in love, as Christ himself commanded us. I have met and continue to meet with representatives, both of conservative persuasion and of liberal persuasion, to work out practical measures to ensure that all may flourish to the greatest possible extent within our church. This willingness to accommodate difference has marked our approach in controversial issues for most of the history of our diocese. We have not always done it well, but we have never been a diocese of theological, spiritual, liturgical, or political uniformity. I have worked deliberately to make this a reality during my four decades of ministry. In spite of his very strong... In spite of its very strong opinions on many controversial subjects, this was Bishop Strong's legacy. I fervently hope that it will be my legacy to the diocese as well. There have been many significant changes in this past year. We've had a number of important staff changes at the Synod office. I am very grateful to Susan Abel for her willingness to serve as interim chief administrative officer while we reassess the scope of that role, and I am delighted to welcome Angela Hantumakas, whom I will introduce more fully later, to the newly renamed position as executive director, providing leadership in the implementation of Growing in Christ strategic plan and coordinating the services that we offer to the parishes and the people in this diocese. Three area bishops moved or retired since our last regular synod. All of them began their ordained ministry in Toronto and served our church with great faithfulness, gracious wisdom and effective leadership, and I am immensely grateful to Bishops Linda Nichols, Philip Poole and Patrick Yu for their service. Just over a year ago, Synod met to elect three priests of this diocese to be bishops in the Church of God. They have now been ordained and consecrated and have, have served, and soon will be serving in their episcopal ministries in their assigned areas for almost a year. Joining Bishop Fenty and me, they bring new energy and their own specific gifts and their deep commitment to the Anglican expression of the Christian faith that is a blessing for our church for years to come. Bishops, even though they are formed in a particular spiritual and theological tradition, do not serve a special interest party. They are bishops of and for the whole church. The area bishops have particular oversight under my direction for a region of the diocese, but they are also suffragan bishops, and so have concern and responsibility for the whole as well as for the parts. We have concern, they have concern for all, all the people of God, and who isn't? Who live within the boundaries of this diocese, including those who are not of any Anglican congregation. They link the parts of the whole and the whole to the parts. My decision to retire at the end of next year, that is December 2018, for those who are confused, is not sudden or capricious. I sat down with my wife to work out a written plan, beginning last spring and finalized over the summer. We have a growing granddaughter and are expecting another grandchild soon. Ellen and I have decided to take up ballroom dancing in our spare time. Even though for some reason our chancellor thinks Ellen does not have enough insurance. Actually, Ellen is here somewhere. You can stand up. Pray for her toes. I am not abandoning the ship, for this diocese is healthy and vibrant, but I do sense that it needs renewed direction after just about 15 years, really 25 years of my leadership. I ask you to concur in the election of a co-judor who will automatically succeed me on my retirement. Being a bishop is actually not at all like being a parish priest, related but quite distinct, a completely different rhythm of work, a different level of complexity, a different set of relationships, a different order of ministry. I was elected as a suffragan bishop of Toronto and consecrated on the 21st of June 2003, given the responsibility for the great area of Trent Durham. Some of whom have their own lanyards. Our late and lamented Archbishop Finlay retired as the 10th Bishop of Toronto at the end of May in 2004, and a couple of weeks later, I was elected his successor as Bishop of Toronto. I had a much longer preparation for the role than those dates suggest. Since March of 1992, I served as executive assistant to the bishop, and so for over a decade, I worked in the closest proximity to the College of Bishops and Archbishop Finlay. It was a steep learning curve to move from the parish into the bishop's office as archdeacon, somewhat less so becoming an area bishop with that experience behind me, but nevertheless, I faced a surprisingly big learning curve when I assumed the responsibilities as diocesan. Archbishop Finlay served as a co-judor bishop to Lewis Garnsworthy for over a year, even though he was an area bishop before that. Bishop Athune, our second bishop, was a co-judor to John Strong. Bishop Snell served as a co-judor to Bishop Wilkinson. This is a usual practice in the Canadian Church, not unique, but a, but a frequent practice. There are several Episcopal elections this coming year of co-judors, Niagara next door, the diocese of Rupert's land. We've had co-judors elected in Quebec, in Huron, in Ontario, and even about to be elected, perhaps in Yukon. I believe that it is in the best interests of the diocese and my successor to have a reasonable period of orientation to the role, and I urge you to concur in my request for the election of a co-judor bishop to be held likely next June. In the meantime, my assistants have been, have given to me a new Twitter handle. #I'mStillHere. I will be here for another year and a bit, and then I will continue to haunt you. I do have a shadow, I've discovered, Patronus, if you're into Harry Potter, or a demon if you're into Pullman's novels, who's filming a day in the life of the Archbishop. Since no two days are the same, in fact, no two hours are the same, I am being followed everywhere. So if you see Nicholas with a camera photographing us in conversation, ignore him. I understand that Patronuses don't get fed other than with the mentors. I have another synod yet to chair, but I want to say now how proud I am of this diocese, of the quality of our staff, of the dedication of our clergy, of the faithfulness of our laypeople, of the capacity of our volunteer leaders, of those who give themselves tirelessly for the mission of Christ in his place. I thank God, at least most days, for the opportunity and the privilege of serving you as your bishop. I thank you, and may God bless you. Amen.